Good evening all, welcome to June 6 Planet Commission Meeting. Tonight we have a presentation prepared for the village of South Hampton and Kevin McCallister, the baykeeper. This is a presentation regarding Lake Agawam Water Quality Restoration and Action Plan. It was presented briefly to us and tonight we'll hear the draft of it. The report was prepared by Lombardo Associates, Mr. Pier Lombardo, engineer and owner of the firm, which has worked with the village on numerous projects within the past few years and this is among, one more among many. And as we all know, are concerned regarding the quality of water in Lake Agawam and how we can reverse the pollution in the lake and what causes the pollution in the lake and what are the remedies are being discussed, investigated in tonight's report. Without any further delay, I will introduce you, Mr. Pier Lombardo. Thank you Pier for coming and joining us tonight and look forward to hearing you. Mr. McCallister, the baykeeper, was supposed to be joining us tonight but he's out of town.
He's out.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Seniak, and thank you Commissioners for this opportunity to chat with you and describe what's been completed. Just so you know, the sequence of activities, just to share with you, the iconic baykeepers through their vision and efforts, they were able to secure a grant, donation from Mr. John Paulson for the preparation of a Lake Agawam Water Quality Restoration Action Plan with the emphasis on action that they and I'm sure many others are a little frustrated with just studies and paper and are interested in seeing some actual improvements to the water quality of Lake Agawam. So our focus is really, what are the action items that should and can be done to restore the water quality of Lake Agawam, okay? So what I'd like to do is, and I'm gonna, let me just provide you all with a one-page summary of the action plan, that way it's a, let me call it a good takeaway, that way you'll have, everything you need to know is really on that page. We have provided a copy of the final report and I have an actual draft, the actual final one that I'll leave with Seniak. And so if you're interested in the details of the report, it's all here. It's about 100, 100 pages or so, it's light reading. So what I'd like to do with you is go through the, let me call it top level issues, what are the real facts and what we're recommending and I'm happy to go through the details of the issues and how we got to our conclusions with you. The first item is to talk about what are the causes and controlling factors of Lake Agawam Water Quality. Lake Agawam's a freshwater, it may get some salt water down the southern end during extreme events that, but bottom line is, it's a freshwater. And phosphorus, not nitrogen as has been believed by some, really determines the Lake Agawam Water Quality. So the amount of phosphorus that's within the water really controls algae growth and algae growth and excessive algae growth really is the key indicator of water quality. And I'll get into what's referred to as trophic levels or different levels of water quality and the connection between algae phosphorus and those levels. But the bottom line is phosphorus is the issue. The challenge, and this is very common with lakes, freshwater lakes unless it's been, it goes back 30, 40 years that I remember when the detergent industry fought phosphorus as a factor and it's been studying and this is preponderance of opinion scientifically is that phosphorus is the limiting nutrient, so all you, if you add a little more, you're gonna get a lot more algae growth, okay? The source of it unfortunately is, the predominant is in what's called the benthic release. In other words, it's the muds along the bottom of the pond of lake that is releasing phosphorus that is, as estimated by Professor Gobler, to be 89% of the phosphorus budget for the lake. So another, that's really the elephant, is it's released from the bottom. And I'll talk a little bit of how that happens scientifically. Common problem in freshwater lakes, especially ones, think of it this way, phosphorus has been coming in from the stormwater, from atmospheric deposition and even from some wastewater, stormwater, and frankly just settles in the lake and goes in a circle, sinks to the bottom and gets released, provides fertilizer for the algae to grow and they sink again and you get oxygen level fluctuations, fish die, et cetera. So it's that phosphorus that doesn't have an ability to escape the system as easily, that's really the issue. And that's a normal, if you will, normal aging process of lakes, they fill up and become meadows, you know, over geologic time. So stormwater discharge is estimated to be about 7% of the total and as many of you I'm sure know, there's a lot of waterfowl that use that lake as a resting area and they're obviously discharging phosphorus. And that has not been studied to date or quantified and we went through and made some, let me call it estimates of what the contributions of waterfowl are to the lake and it's not insignificant, it's not a huge issue. Yeah, please, if you have questions or comments-
How do you get to 7% from the stormwater discharge?
These are numbers that were generated by Professor Gobler from studies that he did on Lake Agawam during, I think about five years ago.
And that's from Stony Brook?
From Stony Brook, yes, yeah, right here in Stony Brook in South Hampton. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted, because I was born and raised here, before they put all the stormwater catch basins, all the farm fields up in this area would come down, this water would be brown, as brown as can be. So all the pesticides, fertilizers, everything ended up in Lake Agawam.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is one of our main, and then I don't know if that stuff ever dissipates, but it would just come down all these streets and it-
Well, you're, that's our suspicion is, what's happened is that phosphorus has been deposited in the lake and now it's just going in a circle.
Okay.
And so that's not an uncommon source because, you know, years ago erosion practices were not very good. So you got that soil that got eroded and phosphorus attaches itself to the soil, see? And then that soil is getting dumped into the lake, well, there's the phosphorus. And naturally, I wouldn't, I would expect that they're fertilizing it as well, so, and soil does have some phosphorus in it, so. So, and I appreciate your historical insight, is stormwater and what we would call more direct discharge or runoff is a category. So the current balance that Professor Gobler came up with said, these are the numbers for his study. It was a fairly limited study, so frankly, one of our initial recommendations is that a much more, let me call it robust, water quality data collection program should be performed because we're talking about spending a fair amount of money and we want to be sure of things. We're basing a lot of judgments here based upon a set of data that, you know, some of them we have varying levels of confidence with.
Having said that, the village in the past decade has intensively worked on reducing stormwater discharge into the lake.
Right.
Throughout the path of this stormwater, numerous wells have been installed, dry wells have been installed to reduce that and also all the properties around the lake have established community buffer zone to reduce runoffs from their properties and not to fertilize close buffers to the lake. And hence the 7% is a reflection of that, but obviously the history is there which is lying at the bottom of the lake.
Exactly, you have a legacy issue that's really a major issue that needs to be addressed. So, but by and large, those are the three major contributors to the phosphorus that need to be addressed. So what we've recommended is that the, let me use this, that these activities be performed, that you install a permanent watershed monitoring system so you know what's going on in the lake and it provides the scientific basis for any actions that are being taken as well as one uses it as a way to validate that the improvements are being made, okay? And it's a wise thing to do continually at some level of detail, as well as one needs a fair amount more engineering data to design the solutions. What we've done to date is really more, I'm gonna call it conceptual engineering, for instance, we don't have a lot of good data, very little data on the stormwater quality. So we're using, let me call it textbook, so we don't want to be doing that, we want to have actual data so we know what the situation is, so that it's not underdesigned or overdesigned, which obviously reflects cost. The second item would be to construct a engineered living wetland for the stormwater treatment. And I'm gonna show you a layout of what we're talking about on that. And so that we would basically remove the phosphorus from the stormwater prior to that water getting into the lake. The third one is, and this is a real innovative and state-of-the-art technique, is to construct a similar living wetland to treat, filter the lake water to remove the benthic phosphorus. So in other words, we're talking about, I'm gonna show you some layouts and schematics, we're proposing to extract water from the lake, pass it through the wetland so that the phosphorus gets removed and put that clean water back into the lake so that we basically allow the benthic release to quote sterilize itself, because it releases based upon a variety of bio-geochemical factors and when that supply or inventory of phosphorus in the muds gets depleted, then there's less. See, that's the technique versus the chemical technique that I'm sure you've heard about, whether it's Phosloc or alum that, if you will, seals that phosphorus in place. And the baykeeper and I know a lot of others in the area would prefer not to use chemical techniques. So we've recommended to use this constructive wetland, so we would do it on a pilot scale initially, because it's against state-of-the-art and we would consider alum or Phosloc treatment subsequently either for immediate sort of, because it's so, the benthic is so bad that, you know, it's like giving the patient some penicillin and then the lake wetland would take care of itself if it's needed. So depending on the results of that pilot, well, this is sort of the, in a hip pocket, if you will, there's a preference though not to use it. And then the last item is to prepare a waterfowl management plan and then implement it, but-
Hunting season?
Excuse me?
Hunting season?
Right, exactly, you know, exactly. Encourage geese dinners.
Kidnapping.
So you've got a history with ducks on Long Island, so make a feast.
I know some estates would love to have that full scale.
Yeah, 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 believe me, I walk, my wife and I walk around a pond where the geese are, you know, and it's incredible, incredible. I think they, they consume a lot of food, which means they excrete a lot of fuel.
I think there's also the, an issue of the, a lot of the septic systems in the area are really too high.
Well, you know, it's a-
Along the village, this district, and because the water table is so high, as soon as there's a storm, there is actually a mix of the septic system effluent and the-
It's a good point, that is one of the areas that is, we're proposing to study intensively in the monitoring program regarding how much is wastewater influencing the water quality of the lake? And it's a little dicey because the evidence that exists from Professor Gobler's work is saying that it has little, because the wastewater is coming in through groundwater and according to his numbers, groundwater is, I believe, I've got it in a slide, less than 1%, it's a very low number. Now, I-
But also this lake, and so, this lake is really fed through a spring.
Exactly.
There is a spring, that's why it's the main source of the freshwater for this lake is-
Is the groundwater, it's a groundwater. We did some studies there, I, I'm honored to have a couple of colleagues that are international experts on septic phosphorus transport and he was out and collected some of the data and spotted where the springs are, because he was be able to measure the hydraulic difference of some wells that he put in the ground and it was higher than, so he was saying there's some springs over here. So that's another one of the things that we're proposing as part of the monitoring program is to do what's referred to as a groundwater modeling study, that's a 3D computer model that would show where the water comes in and where it discharges into the lake as well as there may be parts of the watershed that frankly go under the lake and could go to, and go to the ocean. So, and that's important for knowing the water balance. So, and it's not unusual, because the lake is really exposed groundwater. It's, it's not, you know, it's getting some streams but it's exposed groundwater. So, and it's very common, you know, lakes on Long Island and Cape Cod in particular. So here is a, this is our concept layout for the stormwater treatment system. As you likely know, there's two stormwater drains that discharge at the northern portion of the lake, okay? We understand that Seniak was saying that this area, they're being disconnected and we've been, we've assumed just for analytical purposes that that's going to be eliminated, no discharge will be there. There may be some, but it's supposed to be small. So this can't be eliminated because it drains the commercial area and it's just flat. So we would basically put a plug in the storm drain and pump there and then pump that water through a series of initial steps to remove the solids, the sediments that'll be there. And then from that, it would be going through a constructive wetland for the phosphorus removal and then there's a number of permitting issues that we would have to work through, but one would be just go back into the storm drain that goes into the lake so that there's almost no difference from what's happening today. Now, we looked at where to do this and we-
Mine is the phosphorus, of course.
Excuse me?
Mine is the phosphorus.
That's correct, right, right. So the, the design goal here and the design criteria is to get phosphorus down to, we would want to get it down to probably 0.5 parts per million, so we would want it to be very low. And I'll go through what the numbers are. So the, this is conservation land as you probably all know, so we've looked at that and it's, it's a good size for the stormwater treatment system without dealing with the house. So just the open land is large enough for treating what we call the first flush and we use, if I remember right, one inch of rain and we assumed a certain drainage area and certain flow and so that's what it's sized for. And so a system will work in that regard. It could be very attractive and have recreational value, you know, boardwalks could be placed through there, so, and obviously it would have wildlife habitat value, et cetera, et cetera. The mayor in one of our-
More geese.
Excuse me?
More geese.
Right. Well, the mayor in one of our beauty suggested to even, that a boardwalk could be built here to enhance the public access to this area, as well as we were, we brainstormed to prospectively carton off this up, this end of the pond and put a treatment system there, because as you all know, there's a fair amount of ducks in that area, the kids come there and we're not gonna ban the ducks. That's not gonna happen. So, so to treat it and deal with it sort of proactively in that area, so this whole area could become very aesthetically pleasing as well as, you know, user-friendly, okay? So that's the way that that system would work. We would build, if you will, a portion of that that would be dedicated for the lake for the pilot project on the lake. The first concept on the lake is basically putting a pipe and we've gotta collect data frankly to figure out what really to do, but one of the ideas, just put a pipe at the bottom of the lake with some extensions on it and we're vacuum, we're sucking the water out, okay? We want to grab that water basically at the bottom where it's being released, okay? Push it through here and how we get it back into the lake, there's a number of studies that have to be done to determine what's the right way, so that we get the proper mixing, okay? So that's the, if you will, concept behind it. Now, so that's the, naturally we need to talk about money. And the budget that we have projected for a project like this, for all of the components is approximately $8 million. We have estimated that potentially 50% of that could be state grants, it's really state, federal grants, state administration of federal grants. That number could go up, the eligibility is, you know, there. I just wonder if they're gonna give that much money to one community. So we've been a little conservative and just said, we'll get half of it, but technically it could go up to 85%. The programs are constructed, are configured that way. And then we made projections as to, there's about 2,000 properties in the watershed. I forget how many properties there are in the whole village, do you run off him? So, but any event, we're looking at an annual budget of between $320,000 to $720,000 per year for capital payment, any amortization of the capital cost, that's the reason, the range is there, it's depend on the grant level and then the annual operation maintenance for the pumps and the filters that would be there. We've recommended that the implementing agency be the village, so for major reason is, and become a village responsibility, in large part because the grants are only available for villages or municipalities, okay? Now this shows you just the, let me call it, the simplified grant chart that we put together, we've got the complicated one in the report, that just shows, we've now finished the conceptual plan, we're saying these watershed studies need to be completed so they, that we can have a refined understanding of the situation. The wetland for the stormwater and the demonstration for the lake water can be proceeding right now as, and it would be, you know, integrated with this information and then after this is completed and some data is collected on effectiveness, then the full lake treatment would be implemented. We could, we see this could be done over about a four, maybe a five-year period and the funding for the village would be initially a need of $25,000 to get the grant applications in and provide the engineering work associated with that. And then the 440 is for the watershed studies, the local share of that would be about 50%. There's a state grant that's available. And then for the construction of the systems, we're looking at each phase being about $3 to $4 million. Technically they has a 90% grants that are available, we've assumed that the village would only get 50% just to be a little conservative. This is just a, a listing of what I just said in terms of the ultimate cost to the village. And so that's, if you will, the executive overview. I'm gonna go through a few slides and then I'll open it up to any other questions about some of the, the technical issues. EPA published this nice photograph that illustrates visually good water quality versus impaired water quality. When you look at the chlorophyll A is a measure of algae and the phosphorus as well, excuse me, you need to invert this, eutrophic is extensive degradation. You'll see the standards are that phosphorus should not be over 20 parts per billion and chlorophyll A should not be over eight parts per billion to stay out of the eutrophic range, okay? Because the transparency there is less than six feet, okay? So that's really in this range. These numbers go a lot higher, it's gonna be severe degradation. And then at this end of the scale, the pond, the lakes are growing algae that are toxic, that are toxic to mammals and I'm sure you know of dogs that have died from drinking the water, but the algae that grow have toxic material in them that if consumed can be fatal, okay? So it gets, become a public health issue severely at this stage. This is the data that's been collected over the past 10 years and you'll see the chlorophyll numbers, remember eight was sort of the height point, you don't want to get too much higher. And you can see the numbers have been on to it. Now, it dipped down here in the late 2000, 2007, our, our best understanding of this, this is when the aerators were installed in the pond, excuse me, in the lake. And what happens is that the aerators made the lake aerobic, they kept the oxygen in and I understood you had fish kills. When you get these levels, you're gonna have fish kills because they produce oxygen during the day but at night the algae consume oxygen. Well, they're consuming oxygen all day, they just don't produce any at night. So our thinking is, what happened is that when, when the aeration starts, phosphorus released from the bottom decreases under an aerobic environment versus an anaerobic environment, so, and it can be a factor of 10 plus. So our, unfortunately data was not collected on phosphorus and we would have expected that the phosphorus levels went down, okay? So that's the correlation that I would urge you to sort of keep in mind, is that it's really the algae-phosphorus relationship that needs to be controlled and we've gotta get the phosphorus levels. Ideally, one wants to stay below 20, okay? That's gonna be a serious challenge here. Our goal is if we can get it below 50, you'll still have an acceptable water quality and it's, it should be achievable. 20 is gonna take a lot of work and it's no small challenge. Okay, again, based upon the science, phosphorus management should be the sole focus of the remediation efforts. This is the budget that Professor Gobler put together based upon his studies in terms of the benthic flux, the stormwater contribution and the groundwater which presumably is the septic contribution. And you can see 90% of it comes from the benthic. We projected based upon a potential TMDL, which means the budget that should not be exceeded, that this level of removal is going to be required. So we're talking about very high levels of removal that- So we're talking about very high levels of removal that are going to be pushing the technical state of the art. Okay? Again, as we've talked, these are the three areas that we're referring to in terms of what's going to be the focus. This is the, the stormwater system. This is the photograph that shows where the discharge locations are. Then this gets into more details as to the various components of the implementation plan. The Gantt chart where we're looking at a five-year project, how all the pieces come together. That's in the report for your viewing. And I wanted to acknowledge the, the great support from the village. Gary Gillespie in particular has worked with us very closely and been wonderful and very supportive. And the village has been very, very supportive of what we've done. So, as well as Gene Welch, our knowledgeist who's very well known in, in, I've known Gene for 40 years. So he was my advisor in graduate school and so he's been working, he's very well respected in the industry about what controls water quality in lakes. So with that...
Where is he with?
Excuse me?
Where is Gene Welch?
I'm sorry?
Who is, where is Gene Welch? Is the LAI was there?
Yes, Lombardo Associates, I'm sorry. He's part of it. So he works with us, you know, on these kinds of projects. I'm just, just giving some credit to our brain trust. So any event, be happy to go through more details, but I thought it'd be good now, especially I know you want to...
You mentioned that this presentation is going to focus more on an implementation plan rather than further studies. Obviously what we presented tonight, in order to step into any sort of implementation, you still need to gather more data. And you are planning to present to the trustees this proposal. Hopefully with their sign of that would basically take the first step of funding the study, the engineering data gathering study. Is that correct?
Well, yes. No, the, the, the request of the trustees, we'll be meeting with them next Thursday, is for the funding of the pursuit of the grants for the watershed studies and the design, engineering of the stormwater constructed wetland. So we have enough if, information right now as well as, as part of the design activities, the essential data would be collected. But the, the, the grant that would be pursued would be for design and construction.
How long would that take?
Design and construction?
Not the construction, but the design.
Well, the design could, nine months should be sufficient from, let me say, start to finish. You know, there's always a lot of, let me call it paperwork up front, then there's permitting issues, et cetera. But six months of, let me call it, heavy real design work and then you've got the various pe, this survey work, et cetera. So there's some pre-design activities, then the plans and specs, and then there's a permitting issues. And then as part of those pre-design, there's some data gathering that would be done. Now, if it's done so that we gather that data during the, let's say, winter, spring, that's the perfect time. Because that's where we're going to see the higher volumes of stormwater runoff. So, as well as, we would configure it so that it would be, you know, it's modular. And at the end of the day, that's the parcel that we have. So that's where we're going to make it work for what that area is available.
Just to curiosity, is that all the years that all the topsoil has been running into the lake, would you ever consider removing that?
We looked at it. We looked at removing and dredging and, you know, when we met with Mr. Paulson, that was the first thing he said. It's very costly. There's two issues that you run into, excuse me, what, two issues you run into. One of them is, what's its quality? So, and if it's, let me call it nasty, I don't want to say toxic, but if it's, doesn't meet certain standards, the price goes up. The second item is, where are you going to bring it?
Yeah, where are you going to take it?
Who's going to take it? What are they going to charge you and how far it is? The transportation cost really becomes the killer.
Of course, the other option is to seal it.
Right.
With the alum.
That's right.
To put in the ocean.
Which, well...
You'll never get that permit.
Is that been proven? You can actually tell?
You definitely do with the New York City garbage.
Now, that, years ago.
I just want to add one thing, a little piece of history. Agawam Park was nothing but a swamp.
I've heard that.
And a summer colony in 1900 and 1890s wanted to fill that swamp in. The town fathers fought them on it. Said that it's not hurting anything and filters out the lake. So I got these books I've read.
Yeah, great.
And sometime in 1923, they got their way and they filled that whole swamp in.
Right.
Eliminating the filtering process for the lake.
Right.
So what you're saying...
We were told that as well as, we did some borings in that area and we, we saw the organic material.
So that was the wetland?
Yeah.
Yeah, the park was the wetland. It's, and it's frankly, when you dig down there, it's peat. It's organic material.
Pio, if you could also expand a little bit since Kevin McAllister, the baykeeper, is not there. And also, all bodies of water in the village of South Taptan are still, the town has jurisdiction over it as far as permitting activities.
Right. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
What's their stand on this project? How have they cooperated or influenced or suggested, made suggestions to, to basically push this project forward?
Right, right. Yeah, thank you for mentioning. We met with the, the town trustees and gave them a informal presentation on the project and they have endorsed the, the project. They're very supportive of what we're proposing to do. Naturally, the details and any act, any efforts that occur within the lake needs to get permits from the trustees as well. So, but from a conceptual approach, they endorsed the, the project.
Actually, if I'm not mistaken, the town trustees even supported encroachment of the treatment into the northern portion of the lake.
Into the lake, yes. Right. I was pleasantly surprised because we had talked in the office frankly of building a, if you will, a coffer wall, poristo, at the lake frankly to deal with the duck waste that's going to be there.
Northern edge of the lake.
Exactly. And we sort of put it aside because we don't want to make things too complicated. And so one of the trustees volunteered and said, you know, Gene Welch could do that. And I said, oh, you know, he's preached the choir. I was thrilled when he said that. I said, oh, great, well, let me pull out the sketches that we have.
If the town has, has jurisdiction over all bodies of water, then why...
Excuse me, it's the trustees.
Trustees.
The trustees, not the town.
The trustees are different than the town.
Right. It's a legal entity different than the town. This is the trustees, not the town. They have jurisdiction in, of all the waters and the bottoms of the waters.
At one time, the trustees did run the town, but they gave up that, I think around 1890s.
Okay.
I didn't realize that they were separate.
Right. Yeah, no, it's, they're a separate political entity. They have jurisdiction. For instance, they sell to Sam.
They're both elected, but they're independent and separate from one another.
Right, right. So again, we met with them. We've had communication with the Lake Agawam Conservation Association. I should have mentioned by the way that when we met with the mayor and Seniak and the DPW folks a number of weeks ago, the mayor said that he would advocate for funding 50% of the 25,000 dollars out of their budget, you know, was, he already was fixed. So he says, we'll try to find that. So we're now pursuing other sources of funding. And the Lake Agawam Conservation Association has agreed to, they've committed to funding 50% of the balance. So there's another 25% of the funds, another 60 to 50 that needs to be...
And this is, and this is for the enlarged data collection and, and study?
No, this is really for, let me call it, it's frankly for the grant application. That's due by September 30th. But the grant application has to have an engineering plan.
Oh, okay.
So it's really to put together the technical documents that go into the grant application because we're going to be laying out, you know, I gave you an outline, but we've got to put together some design basis.
But isn't that going to be based on data also, further data or no, the plan that you're going to be, that's going to cost 100?
Well, we would be putting together, let me call it some sections.
Okay.
Say, on the constructed wetland. There is some paperwork, for instance, we'll need to deal with the ownership of the land and getting, but it's really putting together a refinement of the sketch and the cost.
Okay. So I see how the five years is...
So there's no data, what about the data collection?
The data collection would occur after the grants are received. And think of it this way, the data collection and the design of the constructed wetland would occur concurrently. First of all, this is watershed wide. We'll collect data in the pre-design phase that's sufficient for this design to proceed. And then they'll converge at that point to say, okay, what's the next phase? What are the details that are needed on this next phase? And...
So it's like a three-phase, three-phase project?
Right. That's right. That's right. Well, no, in many respects, it's really a two-phase project. It's three in the sense that the grant application.
Yeah, right.
That's really...
That's one.
Right, right, right. And, but we're not going to be just, it's action oriented.
I got you.
Okay? We want to stop the... There's the sort of timeline layout. So these two things would be done concurrently and they would be done and completed probably by 2015. So let's say two years. Okay? And then in 2016, the details of phase two would be worked out based upon this data here. Now, this is really good data because now we've got performance data over a good year. And then these numbers are going to change up or down depending on what happens. And as an example, we, we looked at the potential, we can put a wetland underneath the parking lot.
I was just going to say, that's the parking lot, right?
Right. We can put it under the parking lot.
The theory is a dump in there. Isn't there a spring or something?
Can I just intervene? There is a restaurant, the driver's seat, that's got, I don't know how many cesspools on the lid there that are pumping into it and using. Would you incorporate them into the same?
Yeah. Yeah, I would think that in the restroom, the public restrooms here, we caught the plume and we saw the plume going towards the lake. And whether the phosphorus gets removed or not, we didn't conclude it, but we saw the plume.
Would you allow the other property owners to tie into that?
Well, you know, it's a good question and this dovetails with what, you know, you're going to be hearing, I don't know when, but the whole wastewater issue for the village. So this fund, those, the funding mechanisms that we are pursuing, the funding for that comes from, let me call it a different pot. It's there and it's through the environmental facilities corporation. But the 90% grant is really for more of the stormwater non-point source. See, they, they really don't fund, quote, conventional things. It's only for, they call it the green projects. So they're trying to spur innovation and they want people thinking outside the box. So it's, you know, it's great in that regard. So it could be part of the project, but it's a different funding source.
Concurrent to this proposal, next month, we're going to make a presentation where Department of Public Works, Suffolk County Department of Public Works has completed its studies for feasibility study for a treatment plant for the village of South Taptan. Village of South Taptan was selected as one of the villages to make that for the commercial zone district, not the whole, just a commercial business district. And that report is completed. We'll make a draft presentation of it next month. That basically would establish the foundation and the direction for the type of system and what are the parameters for implementation of it and how again that would be used towards grant applications and funding of it. And the key thing is here is that ultimately, there is not one solution that would address the water quality, but, but a conglomeration of various different types of...
You need to do multi-pronged.
The, the whole reduction of stormwater runoff into the lake, which we've been working on, is one aspect of it. As you know, in the master plan, for instance, we suggested windmill lane, we create a open filtration, natural filtration system all along one side of the windmill lane so that as water runs off, stormwater runs off, that it would be, goes through, basically it's filtered and gets absorbed into the ground, right, and dumped into, into the lake. Again, treatment facilities where they would take the discharge from various stores and the commercial activities in the village. Combination of these eventually in the long run would help in quality of water.
There's two question, I'm curious as how, how you would design this. I, I'm a retired plumbing contractor.
Okay, good.
So I'm curious about your, your design for this, taking that whole parking lot and making a filtering system.
Well, the way, and we frankly, I'm sure you know, we, we work with the nitric system. And we do this right now for nitrogen removal. And we also do it for phosphorus removal in wastewater. But basically, think of it this way, the action is in the roots. And the action for the bio-geochemical reactions that are removing the phosphorus from the water is all below ground. Not all, the vast majority of it. So we would basically engineer this in concrete tanks.
Okay.
And, and the water flow is going to be flowing through it.
What happens to the phosphorus? Does it, does it...
Mineralizes. It's going to precipitate and get attached to the media of the wetland here. So over time, the phosphorus, this becomes rich phosphorus soil.
Yeah, can you imagine?
So presumably, at some point, you could take that out and use, reuse it as a humus material.
The other thing, if, if we do put a treatment plant in, one of the things that was, Stony Brook University, the historical society, published an article in one of the books I got, that Suffolk County and, and New York State did a water survey of Long Island stating how much water Suffolk County had for population versus, and the problems that they would have. And the biggest problem that they stated in the article was that the treated water from the treatment plants was not being injected back in the, in the ground to be filtered out again, it was being pumped in the ocean and dropping your aquifer down.
Right, that's right.
And that's, was, study was done in 1959, I think completed in 61.
That's awesome.
My question is, if we do put a plant in there and treat, could that water be put back into Lake Agawam? Would it affect Lake Agawam?
Well, there's always the depends, how much and how it's being done. Would not go direct discharge. The real question you're asking is, would you discharge it in an area that drains to the, the lake?
Yeah, into the spring.
Or do you, would you discharge it outside of the lake's watershed? And then it's a question of, is it, how significant a percent is of the overall water balance? Okay?
Maybe you can bottle it and sell it.
Excuse me?
Maybe you can bottle it and sell it.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. I mean, I, people talk, it's, it's a serious marketing challenge.
In Florida, they're using all that recycled water for irrigation now.
But what, if the phosphorus is removed, what are the other detriments regarding direct discharge?
Well, first of all, in my opinion, you'll never get a permit for a direct discharge. No, it's number one, just practically speaking. The reasons is that you, regulators and there's good reasons, you always want that barrier of... barrier of soil filtration to be there because there's upsets that occur. Okay?
I mean, that could be, for instance, one solution could be that, that could be the source of water for irrigating all the properties around Lake Agawam.
Bingo. We've, yeah. We urge and we've engineered systems where there's no discharge, that all the water is beneficially reused, either in buildings for gray water reuse or landscape irrigation. So you could take that water...
The state section.
And use it for irrigation at parks, etc., etc. And in this climate, during the winter, you're not going to have the demand for it, so, but it's a seasonal thing. And it, in my opinion, it's the wisest thing to do. And it lessens the demand on the water supply system during the peak periods. And it's, when you have to meet the standards that one has to meet today to discharge, it's, it's a small step to reach what's called reusable standards.
Great, that's good.
And so it really doesn't cost a lot more. And, and it's, you know, we, you know, this day and age, we believe it, it should be done unless there's reasons not to do it. So, so that would be an opportunity in, in the village is what typically is done, you look at the demand that exists for non-potable water. And you may have nurseries, you may have agricultural areas.
Golf clubs.
Golf course is a home run. I mean, golf course is a no-brainer.
God, don't we have enough of those?
Is a no-brainer. I mean, it's done all the time, out west and down in the southeast. So you almost ask the question, well, why not? So, and it, but it's usually a...
But that's the issue of transportation of that water.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah.
It's the piping. It's the piping. But I've looked at, they're not that far away.
Yeah.
And you talk, the costs you're referring, as well as now you're offsetting costs associated with building something else. And so it's, we find it generally makes a lot of sense.
Maybe that could help fund the project.
Right, right. Well, then you get into who's paying and that. But that's a, policy-wise, that's a very wise approach in, in our opinion. We've always advocated that, so.
So thank you, Pio.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your attention.
And as I said, next month, we will have the presentation for the draft study from the Department of Public Works regarding feasibility for suing the village business district. Thank you.
Bye.